I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for July 10th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Hello everyone and happy Pinyolata Day. I was trying to think of a way to bring those to the meeting tonight, but I thought I'd get in trouble, so no Pinyolatas, but you can have one when you go home. I hope everyone had a fun and safe 4th of July, and I heard that our barbecue, fire and police barbecue went fantastic, so thank you guys for putting that on. Tonight, we're going to start with a special recognition and some presentations. We have a civilian life-saving award. Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County will be presenting. And Mr. Preble will be talking about the revitalization of the tennis courts and pickleball courts. Our consent agenda includes approval of the June 26th, 2018 regular and work session meeting minutes, approval of the May bank balances, budget report for the period ending May 31st, 2018, approval of the May check register, legal costs on projects, and the department head monthly reports for June of 2018. Our regular meeting starts with some public hearings. We have sale of surplus property, which is the Rainey Collector, ordinance 1490, which is amending Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the GMC, Chapter 8.04 pertaining to nuisances, ordinance 1491, amending Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter 10.04 pertaining to traffic regulations, and ordinance 1487, amending Chapter 2.16 of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to court and jury trials. We have two regular agenda items, which is the intergovernmental agreement, also referred to as an IGA, with Clackamas County for temporary library director services, and the League of Oregon Cities, also called LOC, 2019 legislative priorities. Could you please call the roll? Counselor Milch?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple? Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any Kleenex up here? Anybody have Kleenex in their drawers? No. All right. All right, thank you. Kleenex. No Kleenex? All right. So, we're going to start with the recognition of Police Sergeants Matt Okerman and Eric Graves. Could Police Chief Jeff Jolly please come up?
Your Honor, Council, Ms. Betts, citizens, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to stand before you. We recently had a couple of retirements of sergeants, and we have got this extensive recruitment process within our department to find two qualified candidates. They were vetted with outside and inside demands and others, who have been in selection across the country. These individuals who've been with our department for a number of years, represent the youth of our department and future of Gladstone Police. I would like Eric Graves and Matt Okerman to come up. I would like to recognize and present to these two new sergeants before you as citizens and to the council, and bestow upon them a certificate of commission to Eric Graves and Matthew Okerman, after being qualified and certified under the provisions of the city ordinance and laws of Oregon. He is commissioned and appointed to serve the citizens of Gladstone City as Sergeant of Gladstone Police Department dated the 10th day of July, 2018.
That's so wonderful. Congratulations, you guys. Next is a presentation on the civilian life-saving award by Chief O'Connor.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Betts, staff, and citizens, I'd like you to be giving us a few minutes tonight. We brought a few more folks in the police unit. I wanted to acknowledge the reason we're here, which is the civilian life-saving award and civil war recruitment were involved. We are joined by gentleman Bob Sermon and his wife Ginger. Bob, if you could raise your hand, please. And on June 20th, Bob was at 24-hour fitness and decided he was going to do some lap holds at about 7:50 in the morning, and Bob actually wound up going into cardiac arrest. June 20th, not too long ago. We're here with all these people here, and obviously things went very well for Bob. He might have been talking about that a little bit. It's called the chain of survival in EMS, and it happens with recognition that there's a cardiac arrest, and then activation of emergency response systems, which has gone extremely well by one of the members of the staff. Early CPR, which happened very quickly, it was actually a great time of day, Mr. Sermon, to have a cardiac arrest. Rapid defibrillation, you know, defibrillators, AG, everybody knows the code, they actually stopped the heart, they stopped the lethal electrical activity and allowed good activity to start again, something that they just started doing. Basically, an advanced emergency medical services care, which we talked about very quickly, Gladstone Fire, the AAR, and then post-cardiac arrest care, which is something that survives, which is pretty hard to do to make sure they stay alive. So, the first people I'd like to acknowledge is the staff of 24-hour fitness, and the civilian, we just actually found out today there was a member involved in CPR, so we have a caller here, so her name is Raven Pennington, who we're reaching off the crew. But the folks involved, and I'd like them to come forward, Trevor Holcomb, come forward, Sylvia Hill, and then Grayson Smith is not here, but he's representative of Operations Manager Deborah Birch, please come forward. And Sylvia was on the phone to 911, Trevor retrieved an AED and had it deployed. Grayson and then Raven Pennington were doing CPR. And it was fast, I actually got a chance to see a video of that today, and it was amazing how fast that was resolved today. So, Chief Smith has civilian life-saving awards, and said Deborah will be receiving on behalf of Grayson Smith. So, civilian life-saving award, three, one of them, civilian life-saving award presented in this case, Sylvia Hill, 2018, presented by Gladstone Fire Department. And family is there, huh?
Yes.
You know, the life-saving award, everything. Absolutely. All right, and then, oh, I'm sorry, Deborah, if you could come back up?
Oh, yes.
Operations manager. Those are for the individuals involved, and this is, I figured you were going to want to hand some to the crew. Just to give appreciation, 24-hour fitness. Quickly, and, relax, relax, please. So, what we give to the crews involved is a life-saving coin, and this is one that I have from a cardiac arrest event, 24-hour system, it's a very fine pocket. It's got a Gladstone Fire logo here on one side, and the other side is the Star of Life, I think people are familiar with that, and the phrase Secundo Vida, which means second life. At least, those are the sellers of this thing. We got very, very excited, and you only get these if you're involved in a cardiac arrest to save, you know, person is walking and talking and going to the station. Actually, these are rare. So, the crew that was involved, this happened at about 7:14 is the actual events. The 24-hour fitness crew reacts at 7:15, Sylvia calls 911, and it's immediately sent out by the dispatch service. Then, 7:18, three minutes later, our squad crew arrives, and I'll call them up, Captain Richard Newton, firefighter Austin Frager, firefighter Kaylin Anderson, we kind of do a thing there, sorry for my sound. And also responding at some point during this was one of our chiefs, Assistant Chief Mike Clark, if Mike could come forward. And AMR ambulance was there quickly, Kerry Nolan and Paul Phillips, if you could come forward. This week, Kerry's a second, so it would be a claim that we give to him, so he's a big guy to have show up. Actually, the dispatch, I should have started there. Teresa Brehala Key, she's represented by the training supervisor Lisa Nicholson, please could be, so maybe you could come forward, please. And then, Captain Newton made a great call, that time of day can be tough for us to have depth here in Gladstone, and he asked for an engine for a fire to come down, so we had Flight Uphert come forward, apparatus operator Justin Colton, firefighter David doing on the crew as well. So, all of these folks were eligible for Secundo Vida coin, which, and Bob, would you be willing to come up and kind of go through the line with Captain Roman here? This is Captain Ty Roman, he's our EMS officer, our medical services officer of Gladstone Fire. And let Bob maybe shake some hands, and then Captain Roman will go out the door. He's probably spread this way, and I'll get out of the way. Okay? All right. That concludes our presentation, and we'll clear the room.
Thank you, awesome guys.
Good job. That's why they were up.
All right, that concludes our presentation, and we'll clear the room.
Thank you, awesome guys.
Good job.
That's why they were up.
Very nice, very nice. Yeah, now we have some places to sit.
Well, I guess I know where I'm going to have my heart.
Do you want the lights back off? Yeah, probably. I just don't want it to get too hot in here, but maybe with all these people out, it won't be so bad. Is that better, you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's on the screen, so we're.
All right, so our next presentation is from Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County. Sure?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Gladstone City Council, it's our privilege to be here tonight. I'm Dan Fowler, one of the co-founders and co-leaders of the Homeless Solution. I'm joined by Nancy Ide and by Jen from Providence, and we want to go through a presentation with you on how we began, what we're up to, and ask for your support and recognition of our organization, if that's possible. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation that'll walk through that, and we'll answer any questions that you have. Just a brief statement that I have in the beginning is, really, our group, really was started as a grassroots group, from the bottom up, not from the top down. We saw a need in the community, and we coalesced members of the community, and you'll see in a minute, it's a broad group of people involved, to really look at what are some of the solutions that we can implement at a local level to help the situation. So, with that, I'm going to let Nancy begin, and I'll chime in when need be, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you for having us, we appreciate being here and sharing with not just Gladstone, but we're working on getting to all the cities within Clackamas County to present what we are doing this evening. I'd also like to recognize a couple people in the audience who have joined us today. We have Jay Pierce, a citizen of Oregon City, and Marion Jean Zahari, and I'm.
Ellen Burns.
Ellen Burns. They're all part of the coalition, and just a small number of the many members that have joined together. So, as decision-makers in your community, we're very eager to share with you, the homeless coalition, and how it can provide resources as you explore how we can work together to address homeless concerns in our communities. And that includes how governments can work together, citizens, private agencies, businesses, faith communities, and other groups, how we can all come together and work because we're stronger together. In the, I'm going to move forward here, one, in the fall of 2016, Dan Fowler and I discovered that we had a very similar desire to address homeless impacts in Oregon City. Dan contacted several key people in the community who were concerned about homelessness and invited them to participate in a group discussion. The purpose of the meeting, in Dan's words, were to gather people together, to create an atmosphere of honor and respect, and to share experiences, and then, and ideas, and to address the challenges. And as you can see in the picture here, there were 25 people that showed up for our first meeting, and some of the people in this picture are from, we have our police chief, we have our downtown manager, we have the education community, the healthcare industry, we have representatives from Clackamas County Health, Human, and Housing Services, citizens, the city manager of Oregon City, and many more, two city commissioners, and I just wanted to point out that it was a broad range of individuals that came together for the first time.
I might add, two of the, I think, of the most important members of the original committee were former homeless people, because one of the things that we started with in the very beginning is, and we're not here to tell anybody what to do or to think we're a group that should eliminate any other group, there are a lot of great groups working on this issue, but we wanted to coalesce or be a group that brought people together, brought different groups together, so they could understand what each one is doing. But with some of the most important people there were people that were formerly homeless, who offered great counsel and support and ideas as to what they really needed.
So, at the end, we asked them, what shall we do next? And they said, we want to be educated, and we want to meet again. So, that's what we did. In November of 2016, we met again, another 25 or so people met, and we learned from a couple of presenters from Salem who came up. They taught us best practices that are used to reach solutions for every different level of homelessness, whether it's families, veterans, single people, victims of domestic violence, youth, so forth. And we also learned very strongly about the Housing First Initiative, and how we need to take care of that, help folks in that area first. So, what was the outcome of this? It was more education, please. And so, in January of 2017, we held another meeting, and there's about 40 people here. We heard from Mary Ellen Winterhalter, who is the homeless liaison for the Oregon City School District, and she taught us and told us about the 300 homeless students at, within the district itself. We learned about the progress and activities of the county's health, housing, and human services department related to homelessness. And then, in the second hour, we held a breakout section where Jennifer, Jennifer Burnham is, I guess your formal title is?
Master Chang.
Master Chang Facilitator with Providence Health and Services, and she led us in an exercise that helped us to learn who we are as a group, and what is our mission and our goals, and that was the start of a vision statement for this group. We also participated in a hands-on activity to determine what is helping and what is hindering us from delivering the right services to those in need. It was a fascinating exercise, and it built partnerships among a diverse community of professionals, as well as building trust among members of the homeless community. So, we're learning that there is power in a grassroots organization, because it's actually the voice of the community. Next, I just wanted to point out that we're now 160-plus representative-strong from a diverse range of community groups, from city and county government to the homeless population, education, business industry, healthcare, neighborhoods, faith-based organizations, and law enforcement. And we've organized ourselves into a community group, which was the one you just saw, a smaller steering committee to make decisions and so forth, and an executive committee. And that's where, that's where we have launched a lot of the efforts that we have been making through work groups, which I'll talk about in a moment. We meet monthly steering committee and quarterly community meetings, and anyone in the county is welcome to attend these meetings. They're held at the Providence Willamette Falls Community Center in Oregon City. And out of this, four major partners have emerged, Clackamas County, the City of Oregon City, who stepped up to hire a homeless liaison officer and provided outdoor restrooms, Providence Health and Services, and the faith community, where they rallied volunteers and stepped up to address all kinds of needs. Then, Jennifer's going to kind of take it from here, she's going to, during the past several months, the coalition collaborated to define its vision and values, and she's going to explain that.
So, when I was asked to get involved, there was obvious that there was a lot of community excitement and interest and desire, passion around this subject, which is a very loaded subject. Just about anybody you talk to, you're going to get a different story about what the problem is and what the solution is. So, we, in this public-private arrangement that we have, this partnership, we have the liability of all of those different interests, and to strengthen that, we're really working on kind of leveraging the influence that we have. So, helping this group kind of think about, what is that going to look like? We have a lot of interests, but what is it that we want to be known for, was my goal in some of these meetings that we've had. So, we took the steering committee through some exercises of looking at the data that we collected in the community meeting, where we were looking for the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats, and then we took those and took that, a subset or representative group of that community, and helped them sort of distill it into, what do we want to move forward to? What do we want our future long-term vision to be and our short-term vision? So, where we landed for the short term was really interesting. It was really about how do we become a hub of information? How do we leverage all of these interests so that we reduce duplication, I would say, and maximize kind of the natural synergy that's coming about? And then, I'm going to let you two talk about kind of the long-term, big, showy, exciting goals that we have.
Do you want to talk about the work groups, or do you want to talk about?
Oh, do you want me to explain the pictures a little bit? We can interpret the pictures. So, again, we started out as the Oregon City Coalition, and so we drew a picture of the bridge, you know, the kind of iconic bridge in Oregon City, and we used it as an analogy of, if we're on one side of this river, what does it look like when we move over to the next side, to the new, to the new future, the new vision that we have? And again, kind of looking for, where are their synergies, where is their commonality in the interests of the church groups, in the interest of the police that were represented there, business partners, the homeless that partake in these meetings as well? Where do we find the commonalities?
And the result of all of these exercises was our vision statement, which is compassionate and respectful solutions to homelessness through community partnerships. And by the way, at that time, our name was Oregon City Homeless Solutions Coalition. However, let me move on to here, we realized that our reach was beyond the borders of Oregon City, and we were drawing a lot more people from within the county at large, and so we changed our name recently to Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County.
We quickly found out that homelessness doesn't have a boundary.
No.
And it goes beyond just the city limits, so if you're meeting the need, you really need to look beyond your own boundaries sometimes. And yet, we had to have some form of a limit, we're not, we don't have some vision that we can solve the problem for the whole state, so we said of Clackamas County, and that's our focus now.
Okay, so, other business of the coalition that's taking place? We have a charter, which kind of guides our operations. We're working on a strategic plan, we've enlisted an administrator, very part-time, to help. We're making immediate, visible impact through work groups, and creating a lot of networking and awareness and educational opportunities through our quarterly meetings. Some of the work groups that we're working on, just to briefly, a warming shelter work group and a needle exchange work group, we're creating impacts, and we're eager to reach out further into the county and offer some help and draw in other, our neighbors and partners within the county to work with us. That's why we're here. Let me move on. So, I just wanted to let you know that part of why we're here is, why we're going around at the county is to request the, not for you to do anything, really, just to recognize that we exist in the county, and that, and to offer your support in any way that you see fit. We do have a charter, like I just mentioned, that we'd like to present to you, and also a sample resolution, if you are interested in addressing that or looking at that at a later time, I'll leave that with your recorder, but we are eager to work with the City of Gladstone in any way that you might see fit. Our next community meeting is in September, September 24th, I believe, it's a Monday, and you're welcome to attend that meeting. And anything else?
Just any questions you might have, there's a, maybe I'll just stop and ask that first, if there's any questions.
I've been having conversations locally about trying to come, trying to pull a group together to essentially kind of do what you're doing, so I'd rather that group just kind of meld with yours. The model that we were looking at is the City of Tacoma's program, where they're connecting people that have rooms to rent with people that need a room to rent, to try and fix more immediate homelessness issues. Didn't know if that was something that you all had looked into or thought of?
We are considering whatever comes our way. We do have a vision of a service mall, we're calling it, where folks can meet, have all kinds of needs met through one location. It's kind of a long-term goal, but it would draw in all the various partners who have a variety of strengths and expertise to help, not just help with the immediate needs, but to help with the goal of getting people off the street and housed on a permanent basis. So, we recently went to the City of Milwaukee, and we now have two more members of our steering committee, so, from that visit. So, you are welcome to attend the monthly meetings, if, I mean, to let us know if you're interested in that, and we can have.
Okay. And can I let those, the people here locally that are interested, I'll steer them your direction?
Right, yeah, that's what the community meetings are for, and we have a Facebook page, you know, from, we keep that updated, so.
Okay.
We toured the Tacoma Outreach Facility.
What a great program.
Couple months ago.
Yeah, great program.
Yeah. One of the things we found in the very beginning is that we created, or we desired to create just a safe place of listening, because this issue is, I mean, we had people in the community that were saying, run everybody out of town, and we had people in the community that said, we have to have full compassion and do something. So, there's the, totally runs the gamut, and we created a place where all those people could be heard, and that we didn't bury your head in the sand and pretend that there wasn't a problem to address. And some of the biggest issues, and when we asked the two people in our steering committee that were homeless, what is your biggest issue? They said, we need a place to go to the bathroom. All right? And one of the biggest problems that the community had was people going into their homes. They said, we need a place to go to the bathroom. All right. And one of the biggest problems that the community had was people going into their yard and going to the bathroom. So, it's, sometimes, you know, the idea of we need to do something, you know, defining that something sometimes is as simple as providing a bathroom. And so, in our work groups, we took four areas of very simple, basic things to work on, to be very practical. And we're doing this, by the way, with zero budget. We have zero budget. This is all volunteer. The only expense that we've been able to do is we got a, we were able to get Clackamas County to expand the small contract for the person that does the homeless count, for the county. And then she provides us with about five hours a week in staff time and staff support. But we were able to create a safe place where people could be heard, solutions could be found, to real issues and real problems that were being, that were there in the community. And from that, we have now different organizations and people and groups that really have a desire to work together for a larger solution. And what Nancy alluded to in this, kind of a vision or a dream that we might have, is really a center that, no matter where you are in your homeless journey, you can be, in a sense, triaged there. You could be assessed. Some homeless people need a place for, just to go take a shower. Some people need medicine. Some people need to be evaluated. Some people, you know, have the gamut of needs. And to create a place where that could be addressed and understood and help that person move from that homeless situation to out of it. And there's two things that we've discovered that you need. Number one is a home. You need someplace with a roof over your head, because you're in trauma. And a lot of people say, well, just, you know, get up and get a job. Well, if you haven't taken a shower, or got back on your meds, or have a clean pair of socks, it's hard to go out and look for a job. So, the stabilization of housing is paramount, is number one. And number two, when that stabilization of housing and you're meeting those other basic needs, whatever that is, and I'm not talking about this as quick or easy, when you meet those needs, then part of our hope for in that center is, and we've already talked to Clackamas Community College and the job placement people, is to actually have that workforce piece within the center to where people could be assessed to their skills, what they are, and get them on a training track, so they actually get back into work. So, now they can begin to help themselves in that arena. So, there's a, there's a lot we're doing. A lot of it is grassroots, down real low and real practical level, while we're working on a larger solution in the long term.
Wonderful.
A little bit about what we're about.
Thank you very, very much for stepping up and filling this need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, could you make sure that you get us the, like, the dates that your meetings are?
I will.
So, we can get in our calendar?
I'll send them to you.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right. The next item is presentation from Bill Preble on the revitalization of the tennis courts and our new pickleball courts.
Well, I thank you for seeing us. I know you guys have a hectic schedule, so I appreciate the time. I brought Tina Hall with me. She's my partner here. My name's Bill Preble. I live on Oakfield Road.
I'm Tina Hall. I live on Dillon Avenue.
And without her, this project would have never happened. And so, we're here, we wanted to take some time to acknowledge what went on in some people without, whose help this would have never happened. And it was actually a very long project. Really, it started last year at this time. We're just getting finished now, but we started it last year. And I'm going to start with Mayor Stempel. When we brought this to her last year, she was so supportive. She originally, originally, we met up in Oregon City. She took some time out of her job to meet some other representatives from the pickleball club to get this thing rolling. And then a few days later, we set up a meeting down at the park with Mayor Stempel, City Mayor of Strider Jackie Betts, and Public Works Jim Why Not. And without the help of those three people, this would have not have happened. We had such a good communication and a work process with them. It was amazing. Jackie was great. Jim Why Not supplied us with everything we needed. He actually did my presentation when we went to the Parks Department for me, so he did some of my legwork. Steve Graves from the city, Parks Supervisor, was great. Anything we needed, we just asked him. And all the Public Works employees, they'd always come by every day while we're out there working and ask us if we needed some help. So, all the, it was all volunteer labor. We got some money from the Parks Department to do this. So, with that, do you have anything to say? That's kind of the gist of it. Okay. So, I, and the reason I talk about the city, we're involved with other cities that have pickleball, and they didn't have this type of support. It was a real struggle for them. It still is. Some of them have actually, the pickleball clubs have died because they have pickleball stripes, they have a beautiful court, but the city has put so many obstacles in the way that they no longer play there. It's just now, it's an empty court again. That didn't happen here, and you're going to see some photos of what went on last week. So, with that, I really, really appreciate all the work you guys did and all the volunteers. With that, I'm going to show you a PowerPoint. It goes from the very beginning when we started of the project. The project lasted about two months. We've been out there working for two months. If you drove by, you've seen us out there working. Myself, Tina, my wife Lisa, and Kathy Preble have been the four people mainly, just about working every day, not to say we haven't had volunteers from everywhere. We've had volunteers from our community, from Oregon City, Westland, Clackamas, Happy Valley, Milwaukee. So, these are people that don't even live here that are coming to help put together our courts. Can't name all of them. I wish I could, but we appreciate everybody's work that came out here. So, with that, I'll have you start the process here and go, oh, do I have that? These are the courts last year, and if anybody's ever been down there, this actually picture doesn't look too bad, but I guarantee you, the picture you're going to see here, you're going to realize in what bad shape they were.
Was that a pressure wash?
I think it was after this pressure wash.
I was going to say it's a BV. You went to pressure wash, and you couldn't even tell what color it was.
It's kind of deceiving, and these next few pictures are going to show you why. Once you walked out on the court, you can see why it was never used. Not to mention, you can see the oak tree in the back. You can't really tell, but that oak tree limb was about 15 feet off the court. If you had a tennis racket, you could stand there in the net and hit it. So, it made the court unplayable, even if it was a perfect court. These are some of the cracks we found in here, and these were not just one or two cracks. As I go along here, I got about four or five pictures. This is a surface. This got to the point that it was actually a liability for the city to have people playing tennis on there because of broken ankles. Not only was it cracked, but some of them were uneven. And you see these things that run through there. That's my foot. That's how thick, what we had to do is we had to go through these cracks and we had to clean them out. We actually pressure washed them to get down. It was basically dirt and grass that was growing out of there. So, this, that's my foot, size nine. You can see that crack's about three inches long.
That was a dirty job, too. You didn't have pictures.
I wish I did have pictures, and everybody was filled with dirt, and we had a whole lot of fun there. And then, this was before we started, and last year, we wanted to see what kind of interest we're going to get, so we actually put some tape out and we put a two-day, yeah, a two-day call to the pickleball community. We must have had 30, 40 people come out on a, actually a Sunday and a Monday, just to play pickleball. So, just to see if it was going to be worthwhile, and that kind of told us it was a good idea. These are some of the people there. We had some food and some music. This is what we did. We started pressure washing, it's the first thing you have to do. You can kind of tell where we pressure washed here.
That's a little obvious.
There's actually, most people didn't know there was color underneath that.
I was surprised. But didn't we wash it four times?
Yeah, we did. We had to keep pressure washing.
It's like four total pressure washing passes before we got it cleaned enough.
And this is actually what it looked like after we've done pressure washing. It almost looks like a brand-new court. Unfortunately, it wasn't because of the cracks. So, this is kind of the process, what we did, why it looked so nice now, because it wasn't as easy as just going over there and repainting the thing. What we had to do is we had to fill all the cracks with concrete, every single one of them.
And we had to do, it was three times?
Yeah, three times. Some of these larger cracks, you'd fill them with concrete. It would settle. You'd have to let it dry. You had to come back, do it again. Not to mention, you can see the bumps on the edge. We had to sand those every single time with a power sander. So, what we did is we filled it again, and some of those larger cracks, we had to put mesh over them.
Wasn't there a special type of polymer or cement?
Yeah.
Something over that? What uses a special?
The cement had fibers in it, plastic fibers to help it, so that when it freezes and heats up, it contracts and it will move without cracking. Here's some of our helpers out there putting down the tape.
Lisa.
You can see the cracks in the background, how many of them there are. And then what we do is you're going to put concrete on it again, and here's that same crack right there after we were done. And I don't know if anybody notices this, but that's the same shoe, too. I was the one mixing the paint, right? So, that's what my shoe looked like. That's the same pair of pants, too, after I got started.
We were afraid if we fell on the court, we'd lose them if you had the same color.
But that's where that crack was. You can't even see it anymore. This is, after we got the cracks filled, we, this black goop is kind of a moisture barrier that we put on first. And then after that, this is called pickleball base, and what we do is, the nice thing about it, this is all recycled paint from Metro. So, everything we put on here is bought down in Metro in Northwest Portland. Three coats of that on there, each one of them. It's all hand-rolled by all of our volunteers out of a bucket, nine-inch rollers.
That's why we were all that color.
Yeah.
And then the next color, and then the next color.
And then, now we're starting to paint the courts, but you can see on the bottom one, all the cracks that were filled, all the lines and everything, as we went along.
There was vacuuming and...
Yeah, we had to vacuum all the dust. When you, when you sand it, it creates a lot of dust. It's basically concrete dust. And we went, we just didn't blow it off the court. We actually vacuumed it all up, threw it away. Then we actually did the bottom one with the same black goop. And then we started, nobody here knows really what pickleball courts look like. So, when we are at this stage, people are coming by asking if we're putting a big checkerboard in, or are we, a chess set or something like that. Those are pickleball courts, and you'll be able to see them here in a little bit.
It upset the tennis players.
The two that we have.
I will say this before, because I forgot to the Parks Department, but we did put the tennis court lines back in. They're there. And the tennis nets are backed up, so if you want to play tennis, feel free if you can get us off the court. And this is what the courts look like now. And you can see, they're much nicer than they used to be. We actually painted the posts for the tennis nets black, so they look pretty sharp. And you can see the difference between the two courts right now. So, this is all volunteer work. I couldn't be prouder of all the people that came out and worked on this. And what you see here, we had these done probably last week, and our opening is going to be next week, this coming Sunday.
This coming Sunday.
Well, we couldn't stand it, right? We got these things done, so we wanted to go out and play on it, but we didn't want to have our opening. So, what we did, we decided to have a jolly four celebration. So, in like two days, I put out an ad to all the local, all the pickleball sites and just local people, and we had all these people show up at 9:00 and fill their court. We were also competing against West Lynn, who has six courts. They had a, the same day, they had their one-year anniversary, so they had a big potluck going. Lake Oswego have six, seven courts. They had the same thing that same day. So, there's three venues going, and we got this many people out there in about two days.
But we had about 60 people cycle through. Wow.
And they all ate hot dogs.
Yeah, they did. They came up today.
Thank you.
And you can see the people here. This is, a lot of these people don't live here, I guarantee you. A lot of them from Clackamas, some from Milwaukee. We had one come from Northwest Portland. They're avid pickleball players, and they love the community. Here's some more of the people just milling around. This is kind of, I just want to show you up on the fence there, you see all those colorful little rackets. So, those are paddleball rackets. And what happens?
Pickleball.
Pickleball racket, sorry.
Still tired.
Six courts going. If the courts are all filled, there's no place to play. You come and you put your racket up there, and you put it at the end, and then your racket comes up. It's time for you to play. So, we have 24 people playing, and I think there's eight to 10 rackets just waiting to play. So, right now, we have at least 32, 34 people. I guarantee you, there's some people sitting there that don't have their racket up there. So, there was quite a few people there, which we were really happy with. And some people think it's a retirement game. If you look here, these are some of the pictures of the people who came. They're young. We had kids playing with their parents. We had kids playing against their parents. So, it's a real social, social time out there.
Grandparents playing?
Grandparents, yep. So, it's not just the retirement community that enjoys this. And this is the best thing about pickleball. It's really social. This is what happens after, after you have a game. The games last between 15 and 20 minutes apiece. They're pretty quick. Then you go play other people, and you just kind of cycle through. After the game's over, you all go up and you come at the net and say congratulations, and you go. And you can, none of these people, I know all four of them, I know all four of them because I met them, but none of them knew each other before this day. I guarantee you, I know exactly what pickleball club they belong to, and I guarantee you, none of them know each other. And they all get on the same court, they play, and they have a great time. And you can see that they look like they're pretty happy after the game's over. And that's it.
Awesome.
Do you have anything to say?
I just want to say thank you. I am so impressed. When I, when we first came before the Parks and Rec Board, I told them I used to work as a community ed instructor for Gladstone way back in the late 80s. And I would play tennis on that court, and I stopped playing after I fractured my foot in one of those, because they were beginning back then. I've always loved Gladstone, but I have never been so impressed with a group of people that love their community so much, they're willing to let the volunteers step in and just take it over. So, I just want to say thank you for your trust and your faith in us, and we know that we will be able to help bring really good things to Max Patterson. So, we appreciate it, and we're really excited about it.
Thank you for sticking with us. I know at the beginning, we thought, we're going to get this done in a month. It's going to be done.
A little longer.
But this, a little longer, but this is fast, actually.
Really, this guy did his lion's share of the work. He ran the project.
Well, I remember when we started, we had that meeting up in Oregon City. That was before I came and looked at the courts. And then I went and came and looked at the courts, and I thought, what did I get myself into? They were a lot worse than I could even imagine. But the, Tom Wooden, who's not here, you know, you've met Tom. He's kind of the mastermind. He does all these, he does courts all over. Without him directing us, we'd have never got this done. He couldn't be here tonight, but he should take a lot of the credit, too. He's the organizer of this stuff, so. And it's the passion of this game that people want to do this type of thing. They want places to play, and they want to play outside. And then this is a, there's no other setting like this I know of that's at a park, where you have a nice restroom right there. You have water, you have a spray park.
Last park.
You have, you can bring your kids. There's no place around it. So, I think this is going to be a little bit of a jewel as far as our community.
This will be great. We're both, Bill and I are both ambassadors for the United States Pickleball Association, and part of our job is to take pickleball into the communities and teach people how to play, and to share the love of the sport with others. So, we're really hoping that we'll get people that'll come out and at least want to try and hit the ball back and forth, if nothing else, just so they get a feel for it. So, we're really proud of it, and we love it.
Yeah. And one final, one final thing, we're having our, basically our next grand opening, our real grand opening, this Sunday from 9:00 to noon. Please come by, whether you play or not, please come by, take a look. If you want to get a paddle, we got some spare paddles. It's, our club, it's very, going to be very inexpensive. It's a 501(c)(3), so it's nonprofit. All the money goes back into buying equipment and everything. The city buys none of our equipment. We own all of our equipment, so there's no cost. Basically, what the city supplies is a place for us to play, and they already had that. It was already there. So, it's a win-win for everybody. But if you can make it out here this Sunday, we'd sure like seeing you, and that goes to everybody else in the community, even everybody here. You saw by the pictures, just about anybody can play this game, so.
So, can we post somewhere times where you may be teaching lessons or introducing people to it?
We will, and we have a website, it's Gladstone, not a website, Facebook right now. It's Gladstone Pickleball. It's a Facebook site. We'll post it on. We haven't, since we just started, we haven't gotten that far to...
We're juggling, right? Now trying to get it all together, but...
Well, keep us in that loop.
We have a vision, we've got it.
And just to expand on that vision a little bit further, a potential use of the transient lodging tax that we are now collecting this next biennium, when we put a committee together to allocate funds. It could go towards promotion of these United States pickleball tournaments that entice people to come here and stay. So, there is potential for marketing services for this in the future, too.
Good, what a great partnership. Thank you very much.
And the community festival organizers, we're trying to work something with them to maybe have a tournament during that time. They would love to see that. We will, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting ceremony. We just can't have too many ceremonies for this place, right? But I think it's the only appropriate, that Tammy comes and cuts on the fourth, the Saturday, like at 2:30, I believe it is, we're gonna have a ceremony, just a ribbon cutting, just to make an unofficial tag for the scene, which will be very, very nice.
Absolutely. I will be there.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it for our presentations. Next, do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right. So, before we start, I would like to say a few words regarding the City Council. It is very important that everyone understand our limitations. I think the first, most important limitation is that we sit here, we are, as we sit here, we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. And it's important that all of you understand that. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like. But after hearing our citizens' desires, we've sometimes gone a different direction. And that doesn't mean that our beliefs have changed, it's just that we listened and we acted accordingly. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comp plan, city charter codes, and ordinances. And we do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead, we have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We believe in making informed decisions, not random judgment calls. So, when the business from the audience comes up, please don't go and do personal attacks and soundbites, because that just doesn't make this process any easier. I want you all to know, we appreciate you taking the time to come here and participate in this process. The council will hold comment until the end of the meeting, where we have a placeholder to discuss any action from council to staff related to business from the audience. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, and hopefully you all can help us do that. Thank you. So, first is business from the audience.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Tammy, and everyone in the audience. And I'm here, I'm Bob Everett. I live here in Gladstone. I also have an office here in Gladstone. And I'm here representing the festival, the Gladstone Community Festival. And this will be the last time you'll hear me talk about this for another eight, nine months or so, since, it's only three weeks, I think, three or four weeks before the festival. And I think we're semi-ready, but we really don't know till the end. I would encourage, when we're cleaning up, I think that's really when we find out. And I would encourage everyone to visit the website, gladstonecommunityfestival.org. In there, there's a list of the activities, sort of the timeframes for things, also a list of our sponsors, all the vendors. And we have been getting some more vendors lately, so that's been promising. We seem to be a little slow this year, but they've been coming on fast and furious. There's a couple things I certainly would like, the city will be well represented, I hope there. There's gonna be a number of booths from the city, so we'd love to see everybody come out from the city themselves. And we, as usual, all of us on the committee really appreciate everything the city does. There's a couple things that we would, we would hopefully ask from the mayor, from you, Tammy. One is to, along, we have the opening on Friday night, and I would like to have you, love to have you say a few words. Also, we have picked our grand marshal, Mary Mayer from Safeway. She's worked there many, many years. A lot of people know her. And she's thrilled. And she will be riding in a car for the fest, for the parade itself. And also, we'll have a, I think, we might even set up her own booth, so to speak, but we'd love to have you introduce her just shortly after, I think we'll probably be after the band plays, then, too. And then we are very excited with Bill finishing everything up to showcase pickleball with all the people that will be in the park. I think it's a great opportunity. We're gonna have the ribbon cutting. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to have a lot of people there, for them to see what the game really is, and, too. And so, we're really excited about that. We put that on our brochures and our flyers wherever we can. And as usual, there'll be the car show, parade, other activities. We're excited to have the Beer Garden open again this year, and we hope that will be, and I have, that will be very popular, especially with pickleballers, we hope that happens. And so, I encourage anyone, again, gladstonecommunityfestival.org, go visit there, and come around on Third, Fourth, and Fifth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Moving in the Park is Friday night, and it's cocoa. So, please come along.
And it's sponsored by the City of Gladstone.
And it is sponsored by you guys, so.
They're doing a chili cook-off this year?
Yes.
Chili cook-off?
Chili cook-off still. Pie baking contest, watermelon eating contest, because everybody gets messy.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm gonna win this year. Came and like laughed last year.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name is Andy Blackwell, and I am working, I'm actually here to give you an update on the Gladstone Food Pantry. For many of the people here who may not know, the Gladstone Food Pantry opened at the Gladstone School District in 2015. And due to a funding shortfall, it had to close on June 16th of this year. They have fifty-five fantastic volunteers and a stable food supply from the Oregon Food Bank, Dave's Killer Bread, and Bob's Red Mill. So, it's, there's so much there and so much in place. Unfortunately, due to that funding shortfall, they needed a part-time coordinator to be able to manage the pantry operations. So, there are many of us in the community, we have eight that are working on a task force now, to, with the school district, to try and arrange for that funding shortfall to be handled via the community, so that it can be reopened as soon as possible. Something that really stood out to me is that the Gladstone Food Pantry, we call it the Gladstone Pantry, but it serves so much of our community at large. Sixty percent of the clients are in Gladstone, Jennings Lodge, and Milwaukee. So, we're able to reach out to more than just our neighbors here to fill this need. But it is vitally important for our community here in Gladstone. One of the clients actually wrote that it's helped her make sure her family has healthy food. She doesn't have a car, and she uses a walker, so it's important that we reopen this pantry in our town. Even the closest neighboring pantries are impossible for me to get to. So, there really is a desperate need in our community for this. So, we're exploring civic sources, grants, and also, our, what we're most hopeful for is for our local businesses and citizens who are involved, who are interested in getting this reopened, to work with us to do so. And I just have to say, I'm so impressed by our community, and with how warm and generous everybody has been. We haven't started our real vigorous fundraising yet, and we're already about fifteen percent of the way there. So, the full funding for the position is $25,000 a year, and our goal is to get commitments for that to be funded over three years, so that we can be ahead of the game, and that we don't have to worry about this happening again. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was up to date on what we're doing. My name is Andy Blackwell. I've put information up on Nextdoor Gladstone and via the local Facebook pages, so that if anybody is interested in getting involved in this, they can reach out to me directly. And I am, I'm very excited to get this moving and to get that pantry opened. One other really unique feature that I wanted to impress upon the audience is it serves everybody, not just our community, not just our schools, but it serves everybody, and that's something really special that we do here.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Tom, are you getting her information? Because he's our food pantry liaison, as of the last meeting. Thank you. Next?
We have others that want to speak, but during agenda items, yes.
Okay. So, then the first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have no objection to approving it in total, but I just want to remind folks again, this, the reports that we get from our department heads that are included in here are really a great way to know what's going on in Gladstone. And I noted this time, there were, some of you were a little skeptical about the city purchasing some large equipment to do repairs on our stormwater system and other things. And if you read through the Public Works Director's report, you will find how that equipment has really saved and improved efficiency, and saved money, and really made a good beginning to doing a lot of improvements of that. So, we don't always bring these things up and talk about them, but I really want to encourage you to access the packet for tonight's meeting and read the report from police and fire, and public works especially, but to know that those funds, even though it was a large expenditure at one time, in my opinion, were very well spent, and I wish the community would know about it.
All right, any further discussion?
Well, I'll second his motion, because I think he made a motion, right?
I did. I made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks. All right, motion was made by Counselor Milch, and seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Next is correspondence, which we have a ton of. Well, correspondence, in my mind, is like if somebody sent a letter for the City Council on an item that's not in the packet. But you're right, what you have here tonight is we've tried to be very organized in putting the item number for where the correspondence is. In regards to items number eight and nine, these are all emails that you've already received, but we also wanted to make sure that you had copies of them, so we can put them on the website, and that they're entered into the record. Okay. And I want to stress to people that it's wonderful that we get letters and we get emails, but please send them ahead of time, so we have plenty of time to read them, because we were still getting emails at 5:30 this afternoon. And we can't do our job if we don't have time to read them, and put some thought into them. So, any discussion on correspondence? Nope, that's it. All right, first item on our regular agenda is a public hearing for number seven, sale of surplus property, which is the Rainy Collector Site. Staffs?
Yes, I'm very excited to bring this to you for some closure, hopefully, this evening. This has been a very long public process, where the citizens voted on whether or not we could sell this property, and that was approved favorably. And then, in May, excuse me, in June, we held an executive session to talk about offers that we received on that property. Our broker, Casra, is here. We don't have any additional information to share with you, except for the offer that is in your packet. And this final step is to hold a public hearing. We did notice it in the Clackamas review, and you have the verbiage in your staff report for the verbiage on how it was noticed. And so, we're asking for the City Council to allow me to sign the appropriate closing documents to sell city surplus at 16475 Main Street to Stephen D. Wells in the amount of $160,000. This is a cash sale, and I also wanted to make sure that we noted that for the brokerage fee, there is a selling, or a six percent cost that we would owe for that. And so, my recommendation is then that we would create a line item in the Public Works Department, because this property was purchased from Water Enterprise Funds many years ago, and that we hold those funds for the next biennium budget for the City Council to decide how they would be allocated.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? No? Do we have any comments from the audience?
No.
Nothing. So, from us, you just need a motion, or because it's a public hearing, do we need a first reading, second reading?
Nope, as long as you just called for testimony, it doesn't sound like anybody has any. All you need to do, unless you have more discussion, would be, I would recommend somebody making a motion. You can really just read number one in the recommendation, authorizing the city administrator.
All right. Somebody like to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we authorize the city administrator to sign the appropriate closing documents to sell city surplus property, 16475 Main Street, Oregon City, to Stephen D. Wells in the amount of $160,000.
Our second. Motion was made by Counselor Milch, seconded by Counselors Tracy and Counselors Nice. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Property has been sold.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna go outside and sign documents while Chief Jolly starts you on item number eight.
All right. So, the next item is a public hearing for ordinance 1490, Amending Gladstone Municipal Code, also called GMC, Chapter 8.04 pertaining to nuisances. Staffs?
Your Honor, Council, appreciate the time to sit here with you tonight. We've talked about this for about a year and a half. The City Council's held public sessions regarding the proposed changes to the municipal code. We're here to talk about two specifically tonight. I believe we've come, myself and Community Service Officer Boyle, have come before the Council back in March of 2017, as well as April of 2018, and was when it was referred back to the Planning Commission. And then we had a council work session on May 22nd of 2018. We've answered and talked about the different questions in various scenarios. And here before you is the first one, Chapter Eight nuisances, ordinance number 1490, and the changes outlined there, and I believe you have that in your packet.
All right, do we have any questions for Chief Jolly?
Mayor, I wonder if we could have the public testimony, and then the chief might be able to answer...
Respond, rebut.
Or not. Yes, to rebut, I guess, yes. If there's some public testimony, just have him answer some questions.
That's a good idea.
Then we can ask more questions of the mayor.
Okay, so do you want to just go ahead, and we'll just do public testimony first?
If you are, I think that'd be a good way to do it.
Is that all right, David?
It's perfectly fine.
Okay, if you don't mind, Chief Jolly, we'll go ahead and do public testimony. Tammy?
Go back there.
No, if you don't want, you can sit there if you want to.
Bill Osborne?
Bill Osborne, I live here in Gladstone. So, let's see, there have been a number of changes to these codes, or there have been a number of these code changes brought forward. Let's see, no, it's on the next one there. One of the issues we hear is that a lot of people asked for these code changes at this town hall in 2016. In that town hall meeting, we broke off into tables, we had different discussions. The city recorded ninety-one questions that night. Seven of them had to do with municipal codes at all. And when you go through those, as far as code enforcement or stricter codes, it come down to two of them. That's 2.2% of the questions asked. I respect that you as a council have looked at how important listening to the people is. I also counted the questions about fees and utility rate increases that people didn't see happy about. That was 6.6% or 3% more. It's a three times amount of the code, so I'm hoping that you all are planning a reduction in our taxes and fees, with the same resolve you have in taking on these code changes. One of the biggest issues I keep hearing from people is nuisances and stuff in their neighbor's yard, that they have problems with cars parked on the street, cars with expired tags. And we already have codes that cover these. A car can't sit on the street for over seventy-two hours, with the exception of they don't have adequate off-street parking, I believe they have fourteen days. Most of the cars that are sitting out there are sitting for a long period of time. The cars sit out there, I've heard that they can't do anything if they have expired tags. Oregon law says that you have to have, if your car is on a public roadway, it has to have current registration. Our parking tickets that are written have a spot on them for expired tags. So, we already have the existing codes there to cover the issues with cars on the road with expired tags. One of the other changes here is make it where if cars are on private property and their tags are expired, or the registration is expired, they're one and the same in Oregon, that, they want to change that. But the wording already, it is illegal to, Code 8.04.030 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, junk keeping. Junk is already defined, part of it includes all motor vehicles which may not be operated due to lack of legal requirements. Oregon law requires you have current registration to drive down the road, and/or are not capable of being operated or driven. of being operated or driven, and motor vehicle parts, abandoned motor vehicles. So, cars that have been sitting for a long period of time on private property are already covered in the codes we have. We have issues with, there was a letter that was written in.
The three minutes is up, and I just want to ask you a question. You submitted a very lengthy letter to us. Is this just going over the same items that were in the letter?
No, this is some more, and I thought with the public hearing, we weren't kept to a three-minute time limit.
David?
You can certainly have a time limit, you can give some more time if you want to, it's really your call.
Okay, because I'm sure we've got a lot of people, do you, is it going to be quite a bit longer?
I can shorten it. I've tried to shorten it up a little bit already, so.
Yes, please.
One of the other issues, somebody wrote in a letter about somebody having sofas or couches on the sidewalk. We, again, we have codes already that cover that. We have codes that cover garbage, we have definitions of garbage. I think that when they're trying to, some of the changes of solid waste and junk are encompassing a little bit certain things. I think those get intrusive into our property rights. The biggest thing, I guess, that I would want to point out also is that some of these things are used by one neighbor as a weapon against another. I wouldn't be sitting here before you, I wouldn't have gotten involved in anything in the city. Had my neighbor not thought he owned the other side of the street and got angry when my kids would park their cars there, I would park mine and call the city on us, which would lead to a traffic ticket. So, a neighbor using these as a weapon is something I experienced. That was my first experience in the thing that got me involved publicly here in Gladstone. So, that's one of the things, I think, a lot of these codes that are complaint-driven, that's a problem with. And to his credit, when I was telling Chief Jolly, as you know, I tend to have a bunch of things to say at times. I had all these things to say and he says, "Well, it sounds like your neighbor's just using us to get at you." And I'm like, "Yeah." And he says, "Well, we're not here for that," which I really appreciate. I think Chief Jolly's a good guy, I think the Gladstone Police Department's doing a great job. But as I've said before, you're here today and Chief Jolly is here today. Tomorrow, there may be different people in your seats and we may not have a Chief Jolly, we may have Chief Grumpy. And that chief may want to go out and supplement the police budget or the city budget by finding people. So, I think that adding to all these codes that we have already is going to complicate things. As I wrote in there, some of the wording also is very subjective and leads to a lot of interpretation. So, I think the way we sit right now, I think the codes should stay and I think we should focus on enforcing the ones we have because I think most of the big complaints that I've seen on social media, most of them that are presented to you are covered with the current codes we have, we just need to enforce those, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and the picture of the house, that was one of them on Gloucester, that was listed as a trailer that covers the whole front of it. And when you drive by there with the trailer there, it looks like that may be the case. Well, the trailer's gone right now, the people are out of town, I assume. And what you realize is that the trailer is covering a big garage, and then they have the house in a smaller garage. It sprawls out quite a bit.
Picture back down the street.
So, you can see the concrete pad the trailer sits on, it doesn't cover the front of the house, and it's on a concrete pad, so even with the new code changes, that wouldn't change anything of that location.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to just wait till the end and? Okay, next.
Can I have a clarification?
Sure.
On what is the time limit for people?
Well, because it's public testimony, I don't think three minutes is probably appropriate, but we'll.
You could, yeah, if you want to set something, I would, I wasn't counting, but I think Bill probably had about five.
Five, yeah.
If you want to set that as a time.
Okay, that's fine. All right, next.
Angela Riley. May I hand out some papers?
Is this different than what we received?
Well, there's a couple of these that were in the email I sent and then a few others.
All right.
And I apologize for my crappy quality for my printer. Okay, so could you do the timer for five minutes, please? No, I think this is fine. So, I'm personally really excited about the ordinance changes. I don't want to get into nitty-gritty of all the details because there's a few of them. I mean, I'm cool with people, we ourselves have put things on the curb for free signs, and I think that the good neighbor and livability issues are, it's all subjective and it's up to each person to be a good neighbor. So, obviously, if you have something really junky out there and it's there for a day or two, you take care of it. But some of these pictures are stuff that obviously no one's going to take, especially after it's been rained on for months. So, but as far as the car issue goes, the traffic, I'm kind of relying on the traffic and the parking issues to pass because we have three junkers in front of our house now. It started out as one, and that car's still there, it's been there since August, as Chief can testify. So, we've just, they've been playing the shuffle game. They're not abandoned cars, they are cars that are owned by people on our street. And because it's been such an easy thing to do, now we have three. And one of them is a pickup truck with tools and ladders, et cetera, and they're parked like literally right out my window, my living room window. One of them's been there with just junkers. So, we, it takes up our parking and stuff, there's been times when we had nowhere to park. But the biggest, I mean, I just am here to encourage you to pass these ordinances, but at the same time, I do agree that like someone who has a car that, say, is their car on their property, say it's in their driveway, I don't think that if it's a car they're working on, I don't think they should have to, that should be, they should be able to do that, is what I'm saying. So, I don't believe that, I feel that having these ordinances in place, I feel that it is a protection for homeowners. It's valuable, it's an asset for us. And I would never, like, that car that sat in front of my house, I wouldn't call, I didn't call the police on those people. I went over and talked to them, we actually helped jumpstart the car, we hauled some of their stuff to the dump, we've helped these people. It's not like I'm just trying to be a jerk. We've done, I mean, we're still friendly with them and there's a couple of other neighbors who are doing a lot of the calling as well as me, but we're trying to clean up our street. It seems to have gotten really bad. In the five years, six years that we've owned this house, it's just gone downhill. But the other issue is, I feel like sometimes when the new ordinances are about to come out, there's a big stink on social media and there's a really, there's an element of divisiveness that's going on. People start fighting online, people start getting all worked up. Call the alarm, you know, sound the alarm, get everybody worked up. And I feel like if we could find a way to build a bridge in the community, instead of having all this divisiveness and fighting over what's happening, I think there's a lot of fear and a lot of worry about what's happening, I mean, growing pains, changes. If we could find a way to maybe have some kind of a Q and A or an ability for people to voice their concerns and maybe get some answers to questions so they won't feel so worked up or upset, and so there won't be so much fighting and divisiveness. Because in this call-out culture, this accusations and trying to throw people under the bus, it's just creating, it's just kind of snowballing and going downhill. And I think that if people could have a place where they could get answers or be heard, I mean, not just here, but maybe when things, when there's new changes, then maybe it'll calm down the community, bring us together a little bit, help us to move forward, create some progress that's productive and positive. So, that's my only thought. I don't know how we would create that or how that would come about, but I just think that that would be a really good idea to bring people together instead of getting us all fighting on social media.
We have coffee with the counselors, so how would you like to help us make that better and more effective? You want to volunteer to help us?
Just come to it, I guess. Create some conversation.
One question if I may ask. So, in regards to the vehicle, or a couple of vehicles I talked about that park in front of you, how does this new ordinance help you with that?
Chief?
So, whereas it's 72 hours without the vehicle being moved, a couple of these vehicles, as I understand, are not registered, they can be cited immediately.
Oh, okay, well, that I didn't know.
Yeah, they have been, they're playing the shuffle game. We've been, I've been in touch with Chief Jolly and Officer Boyle, and it's just been going on and going on. And they move the cars, they might be gone for a week and then they come back. I've seen them like haul them away. I think only one of them actually runs.
So, and these are on a public street?
Our street, our street, Neil.
Right, I know. That's why I'm asking is because this is about on private property. So, if it's on a public street, there's state law and ordinance already, so that's why I was asking, how's this ordinance going to help?
Can we have Jeff respond?
Yeah. And that goes to the same answer, is that if it's not registered and it's parked on the side of the street, we can cite it immediately.
Isn't that already a law?
No, that's, the confusion is, is state law will cover, if we stop somebody driving a vehicle that's not registered, we can cite them, but for parking, it's 90 days.
Okay.
And there's no provision for no plates.
Before we, do we have anybody else that wants to speak on this, Tammy?
We have one more.
Okay, because I'd like to get all the public testimony done first and then have Jeff respond. Okay, next.
Brenda Quint Gable. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I support the changes in general for the ordinance changes. I've lived in Gladstone in the city limits for 23 years, and I've certainly had friends both in the community and outside that have had people move in and, since they bought their place, and just let their place go to trash with parked cars on the property, but they're rusted and they're just sitting there. And I really don't want us to continue because obviously our police are tied, their hands are tied under our current ordinances to protect our property. And so, that's why I'm here to support the new changes. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? That's it? That's it? All right.
Oh, I'm over there.
Hold on, we have a late coming.
Larry Reimers. I just want to say that in 1972, I wanted to buy a house in Gladstone and I didn't know anybody in this city. So, I had a meeting with Roger Rook and Bob Schumacher and Axe Patterson. And they told me they weren't going to let me in this city because I was a bad influence. But we liked the city, we moved into it, we didn't see any problems with the city, but it changes. And with a change comes problems. It's not with the neighbor so much, it's with their attitude and what they bring into the city. We have a big problem up in our place that we have a person was buying, wasn't buying, he was getting cars for free at Craigslist, and he was doing a midnight tow into his yard and dumping them, and then he was going to work on them, they didn't run, they weren't licensed, and the tires were flat. Other than that, it's a pretty good car. A lot of bad stuff, didn't have headlights and everything. There were 10 of them that they brought in. We got our fine chief of police involved in it, and slowly, slowly, he tried to outthink the police, but I don't think his mind was going too straight. And so, we got those out of there, but he has a boat that was last registered in 1997, the tires are flat on it too, and nobody wants to buy that thing. But he's now loading it with garbage because he says the house has been sold and he sold it to his friend, so henceforth, it's not really a registered deed. So, he's not responsible for it, he doesn't know who's filling the boat, but it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
Now, that house aside, has been a problem, and I think it's got active because we have now a homeowners group. And we are part of 24 homeowners, I think, now. And we go together to see these people, to see what we can offer them to help get the hay field cleaned up in their front yard, get the garbage picked up. You know, what do we need to help? Well, he just wants, mostly, he just wants money. But up the street, we have a man who's an arborist that brings huge logs, I mean, three, four feet wide maple, fir, whatever he's got, surplus, and he puts them in his front lawn. Are you getting a picture? There's 26 logs there right now stacked up about six feet. Now, if anybody thinks that we may involve his privacy issues, you know, where's ours rights? My wife gets up every morning and she opens up the window, opens up the blinds of bedroom, and she sees all those logs. Now, that's the view she's got each morning. And it's getting worse in the backyard, but I don't see the backyard. All right, yet, the fence, his fence is starting to fall down. But there's got to be some stop to some of this nonsense going on. And that's where your, and code enforcement comes in because then you have something to deal with. I don't think they want to go out like one man said and charge $740 for a stolen bicycle sitting on a front lawn. That's a point of ridiculous to say something like that. But, you know, we've got to have code enforcement, it needs to be updated. And it's just, you drive around this city and you see trailers parked, you see, up on View Acres, I see a brand-new boat, I mean, not a brand-new boat, it might have been new about 30, 40 years ago, the tarp's flapping on the side, it's been dumped there, I'm sure it has, you know, but we've got to get our ordinance back into shape and get some, really get after some of these problems because they won't do anything if there's no penalty for it. So, I thank you very much all for my time, and I appreciate this city.
Thank you for sending us the email also.
So, Your Honor, I think that's what Mr. Reimers brings up about this revitalized Neighborhood Watch concept that we have going, and they're.
Idea.
They're our first neighborhood, and they've taken it a step further, and they get together and go help people in need, whether it's the elderly person who needs their lawn mowed, or this gentleman with the boat. They have extended their hands to help clean up the place and do a number of things for them. So, the citizen activism is what we're doing, and our code person works in conjunction to try to help address what tools we have currently.
Do you have that program written up? Do you have an outline? Do you have a process so it's something that maybe we can roll out to other neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a great idea, that's a really good solution. Okay, questions for Jeff? No?
I do, but go ahead.
Well, no, go first.
No, go ahead, you started.
So, bear with me on this one, Chief, if you don't mind. And you're long and illustrious law enforcement career. Have you ever pulled anybody over for violating the basic rule?
Absolutely.
And on those occasions, did you cite them every single time?
No.
And why not? Because they were breaking the law?
Discretion.
Okay.
So, I always had the concept, the lowest amount of enforcement necessary to get the message across and get people into compliance.
Yes.
That's how I do things.
And that's what I was, that's really the question, my question, is that law enforcement is not just citation only, is it not? It's also just compelling somebody to come into compliance. A lot of folks, I myself have sometimes pleaded ignorance to law, and I've found out from a judge that there's no ignorance when it comes to parking near a boat ramp. So, I'm duly guilty for that. But I just, I think that one of the things I keep seeing or hearing, and folks who have contacted me in opposition to these code changes, are that it is just as black and white as citation after citation after citation for any of these offenses. And I would assume that you and your code enforcement officer are more interested in working somebody into compliance through either informational services, helping them identify where they have, need to make corrections, and/or working with groups such as the gentleman, I believe Larry and Mr. Reimer, is that correct? You know, those groups can actually facilitate some assistance because that's the other thing I hear, is that there are folks who need that assistance. But I really want to try to make sure that the citizens understand that this is not some method or mechanical way for you to collect citations. This is about compliance with codes that make the city a much more livable city in its whole. And as we hear from these citizens, some who've been here for quite a while and others who haven't, they want to live in a livable city, and they want to live in a viable and vital community. So, I just want to make sure that we're on the level as far as how this would be approached once these codes, if they are put into place, are put in place.
Yes, when it comes to livability, the least amount of enforcement we can do, that's the avenue we're going to take, whether that's a visit, a verbal, written warning, we're going to take all the steps necessary that we need to just bring it up to code. It's not a revenue thing. I think you see in my monthly report, I always put the amount of traffic stops officers make. I don't know how many citations. I don't know how many citations they're writing. I'm not concerned about, uh, tickets being a revenue stream.
Right.
That's not my job. My job is to make the streets safer and the traffic to be more orderly. And that's the same with the livability issues with ordinances such as these.
And I subscribe to that, and I believe that's how it's followed in a lot of communities.
Yeah, escalation's the last resort. Counselor Neese?
Um, yeah, a couple things, because we've had some conversations in the past, and I just want to get better clarification. When you talk about, and as Angela pointed out, some cars on her street, and three, and not being able to move, and, help me understand, if the tags are expired, you can't ticket them or you can ticket them?
They have to be ninety days.
It has to be ninety days.
Correct.
And after that ninety-day period, then you can go in and ticket.
Correct.
But not anything prior to that, even if it's, and when she was talking about the car shuffle. So when the car, even though it's expired and they're moving it, unless you catch them driving the car, you can't do anything about it, is that correct?
If it's recently expired, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And what do you mean by recently expired?
If it's below that ninety-day window.
Okay.
So currently, it's ninety days for a parking citation.
Okay. All right. And I kind of agree with what, um, Counselor Tracy was saying, because I just can't imagine us being so strict that we're gonna go out and fine everybody that's doing everything incorrectly and doing the seven hundred and twenty-dollar fine. I would think that we would give discretion to the people and give opportunity there. And I feel that the police department is willing to do that. My question is, with Sean as the code enforcement officer, how much is he doing on a day-to-day basis in, in talking with people and trying to get the remedy fixed without having to fine anyone?
Uh, he's constantly, um, I believe if you were to look in the monthly report, there were something like eighty-four ongoing calls-
Okay.
Uh, last month that-
I don't remember, I do remember seeing it.
Um, I could be wrong. Um, so he's constantly working with people to bring, uh, them into compliance.
Is there a detailed report on what he's, when he's out talking with people and what the outcome is, or what the reason he was there? I mean, to give us a better idea of what he's actually doing, that we can follow that. You know, like if he goes to so-and-so's house three times and they still haven't complied, then you're gonna do something. But prior to that, I mean, how much is he going and visiting these, these locations of issues that's going on?
It depends on how fast they comply.
Mm-hmm.
Or what the remedy is. It would all be individual, individually based, depending on the circumstance and the type of violation, and there's a lot at play there.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's something that we really need.
I, I would like to see a little more detail from Sean on that.
Well, and I'm making a note of that as we talk through, um, how to improve existing codes that we have and enforcement, and understanding what kind of calls our code enforcement is responding to. And so we can certainly, the chief and I work about a reporting mechanism for what's currently in place with, with Sean Boyle, yes.
And I, I would suggest that in the analytics, you look at proactive versus reactive, um, because I believe Mr. Boyle probably is proactive in some of these cases where he's on the street and he sees a, a potential offense or sees a violation and will stop and do that on his own instead of-
Yes, if there is a glaring offense, he, he will address it, but it is mainly complaint-driven.
Okay, so it is reactive?
Yes.
Okay.
More questions?
Oh, and following up with that, um, there's only so much time that he and officers have. So when, start enforcing these new ordinances, what ordinances aren't gonna be?
I think we'll address them all as they come. I, we're not, we don't put one ahead of another.
So, well, for example, at the Traffic Safety, uh, Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh, when it was talking about, um, the parking regulations, uh, maybe changing the time from maybe four to, uh, to two hours on, on the next block, that, uh, someone from your staff said that there isn't enough time to enforce parking regulations now, so it's on an honor system.
Correct. Um, i- if you look at just the two-hour parking on Portland, uh, we don't have the resources that we would be able to have somebody go by and monitor a section of town on a continual base. That would be their only function.
So would-
Similar to Oregon City. They have people specifically dedicated.
Right, no, I understand that. So, so we don't have any, but we do get parking tickets listed in the, the monthly report.
Correct. We do do parking tickets. Um, but-
So, but that's not, but that's not a time-
Could be a parking in front of a hydrant, a parking ticket, could be a lot of things.
Blocking a driveway.
What?
It's my question time.
You can, you can comment in a minute. So, so that's why I say, because when I, um, rode last time with an officer, we were talking about, uh, crosswalk enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
Which hasn't happened in, in the city in a long time. And again, it was a, uh, lack of personnel to do that. So if we're adding more to the, uh, police department's, uh, plate, how do you plan on enforcing it?
I, I think we're talking about two different types of enforcement and two different, if we're looking at a downtown corridor with either parking meters or timed parking, that's, that's a different type of enforcement and necessitates a different type of person, whether you're looking at Portland or Oregon City where they have a downtown corridor and people specifically assigned to enforcing those time limits or the meters. No, we're not equipped to do that.
Mayor, may I ask another question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have an officer posted here on the corner of Dartmouth and Portland Avenue who monitors the stop signs to make sure, ensure that everybody that hits that intersection stops at the stop sign, Chief?
Not yet.
Okay. So I'm assuming that what we have here is basically participating in social contract, and we all follow the laws if we feel like we should, and the parking signs are the same. You don't necessarily have to have active enforcement right on top of the sign, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes, sir.
You have a problem with some of my questions?
No, actually I-
You can ask me.
No.
We're fine.
You can say some.
We're good, thank you.
No, you're making, you're making a mockery of questions that I'm asking.
It wasn't Counselor Reimer.
He was just clarifying something.
Yes.
All right.
She didn't look that way.
Additional questions?
I had a comment, just, I had a visit with Boyle, and maybe this will help, because it sounded like everyone had questions.
You need to come up to the record. Um, you need to come up to the microphone, please.
Um, I had a visit with Boyle.
And state your name, please. Your name?
My name is Claire Coy. Um, and he, he came out-
You don't need to address him.
He came out to my house because we have a truck tucked back in an alleyway closer to our backyard than the street, that one of the Californians that moved in across the street, that they're gonna make a million dollars off the house because they're turning it, and they're gonna flip it, or they're gonna do whatever they're gonna do, um, had filed the, so I didn't even need to know who it was, because I've lived there for sixteen years with that truck. So, I didn't need to ask that. But basically, he came out and the visit was very brief, um, and there was a, it was kind of a written warning, but there was a citation amount on the bottom, and if you didn't comply, then you would pay the citation or whatever. Well, I was surprised, because what we had to do was go on Craigslist, grab some license plates for it, fifty dollars or seventy-five dollars or whatever it is, because that's what you can do. I mean, it's amazing how you, how you can skirt the system, but it's there. Now, I have to pay for plates on a vehicle that's, my husband and son are restoring, and they work on it, they work on it all of the time. Very recently, they started working on it, but they're working on it. And so now I have to pay to license the vehicle that's not quite running, that's stored mostly in my backyard. And I, so I asked the question, do I need to just put up one more chunk of fence, or what do we need to do here? But when I went down, when I came into, into compliance, and, you know, did everything like I needed to do, otherwise it was gonna be the seven hundred and twenty dollars. And it was about thirty days. So I came into compliance, I still had to pay, like, I came into compliance fee, and I can't tell you exactly right now, but I think it was like sixty or seventy-five bucks. So like, I still paid something. And it sounds like just reading on social media, some of these other people, they have the same concerns. I was out basically a hundred and fifty bucks for, I really don't know what, because the truck is stuffed down the alleyway next to my house. Some people, a hundred and fifty dollars, maybe people on social security, that might be all they get. So, you know, it was a lot for me, but it'd be a lot more for someone else. So I, I kinda just wanted to say something because it sounded like people had questions about, um, Officer Boyle, specifically how some of those visits look. And I had one, so.
Okay.
And I'm, you know, it's, it's good now.
Now you have cheap John Park.
I think I've seen him too. But, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to say, and it, you know, so, I've lived here since two thousand and three, in Milwaukee before that, and it does kinda seem like we just want to own houses and live here, and we're, we're really not gonna make a lot of stink or present problems, and we don't need a lot of rules. We just want to live in our little houses with our families and not be bothered. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff?
I'll make a quick comment.
Uh, you already-
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, nor done.
It's mine. I work closely with Sean Boyle. We take pictures of vehicles that are offending, and we email them to him with a description of the address and where it's happening and how it is. He responds back to the person first, nothing about fines or anything, that the code doesn't cover somebody who parks their vehicle, stores it on the street, and when Sean gets notified, he talks to them, and they whirl around the block and park on the other side.
Okay, that's true.
There is no code for that, and we need that to get those people to understand their toys don't belong on our street.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other addition, additional questions for staff?
So, well, I'm, I'm confused. Eight oh four deals with eight dash, or eight point oh four deals with parking on the street? That's the one we're talking about now?
Which one are you looking at? Eight oh four point one four five.
Right.
What page?
Sixteen or eight dash twenty-three? No, I believe we've, we've kind of transitioned into the next one, the parking.
Well, that's where, I, I was getting confused, because that's a separate issue.
I should say, my, my vehicle was on my property.
Right. So, so that would be under the eight dash twenty-three, the page.
Well, that, that's also on, uh, eight point oh four point one four five.
Right.
It's addressed there, yes.
For, for, on private, so-
On private property.
Right. So when we're talking about on the street, that's under the ten point oh four?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's what we-
So it's all getting mushed together.
It is, which is-
All right, well, we're on eight.
Which is a separate hearing and a separate-
Item eight ordinance, fourteen ninety, chapter eight point oh four pertaining to nuisance. Do we have any additional questions for staff?
Well, one thing that was mentioned about, um, you know, like what the Neighborhood Watch is doing with coming together, and I, I've seen it many times on, uh, Next Door Gladstone where someone is commenting about a neighbor's, um, grass or, or whatever, is like, well, you know, you know, rather than call the police, why don't you go talk to him? I mean, I, you know, I've done that with, with, with neighbors, and, uh, so that's why I don't think this is, this is necessary for-
All right, any additional questions for staff?
Well, one of the last, because the E talks about, uh, dry, gravel driveways free of weeds and vegetation. So how many driveways do we have in the city that have a, a lot of vegetation and weeds?
I, I wouldn't have an answer for that.
Hundreds, which would be in violation of this if you parked there.
All right.
So just-
Yes. Please come up to the microphone. And then, that's it, no more.
Hi, my name is Donna. I live on Arlington Street, and I have a house on my left-hand side. I live in three townhouses. And he has cars in there and a whole bunch of junk in his car, in his grass, in the yard. And it was crazy, I mean, the grass is yay tall. I had to go over there before and get my little kitten out of there, and I almost fell in a toll of all they had in his yard. But what I'm really getting concerned about with all these cars being in there and stuff, and none of them run, and the last car that he bought was two thousand and fifteen, and it says the year fifteen on it, but my concern is the trees and all the bushes. I mean, it's over my property line. I have asked him very, very nicely many times. He ignores me, he doesn't care. Um, I can't even try to fix up my backyard because of his trees and all, everything that falls in my yard. I have, I'm a foster parent, I'm raising my eleven-year-old granddaughter, and I'm to the point, I don't know what to do. I have called it in, and called it in.
Get his card. He's got a pocket full.
Okay. Because I'm afraid-
Oh, you just have two left. All right.
Thank you.
But you know how to get hold of him online.
Okay. But I'm afraid that if somebody was stupid enough and throw a cigarette in there with all them cars being there, it's gonna blow up that whole street.
Contact the police department.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, any additional questions for staff?
I've got one question that I think will kind of clarify things. I've been, I was appointed to the council back in two thousand and eleven, and a question came up at the time, what we're doing about nuisance codes and such. And we have worked over the years. We've put more concentration on it in the last year, year and a half, okay? And my understanding is, and you can clarify this if I'm wrong, okay, the code hasn't really changed that much. You've only tried to clarify it so that you could enforce what code was there. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I don't mean to speak for Bill, but, uh, one thing that he and I agree on is that this is what was directed by council for us to identify the most critical things that we need to deal with. So these are just clarifying things, but Bill and I would agree that the entire code needs to be looked at and revised eventually at some point.
Okay, which I have no problem.
Okay.
And then the code enforcement position was, uh, extended to full-time and not part-time code enforcement.
Right, so now here's more time to spend on these.
That's a good point.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? Would someone like to make a motion, please?
And Mayor, I would just suggest closing the hearing as well.
Oh, would someone like to make a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion was bade by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor Tracy to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I've had this letter from Bill Osborne, and he talks a lot about rights, 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 and I guess that just drives me crazy, because for every right, you have a hundred responsibilities, and I think that's where we're falling down. Yes, you have a right to have twenty cars in your yard if that's what you think is a right, but then you have a responsibility to take care of those cars, and if they're creating any kind of a nuisance for anybody else, then that's where we have to step in as the governing body or as the police to try and have a community where we all can live together. We have rights, yes, but with each of those rights, we have, like I said, a hundred responsibilities to deal with each of those rights that I don't think are getting mentioned here, especially from Bill Osborne. Um, and then as far as like fines, I have to agree with the, with everybody else, they're just kind of the beginning tool. It's like, please fix this. If not, you could get fined up to seven hundred and twenty dollars. It's like going to court. You go to court, if you even go to court and you say you're guilty, the judge almost always, not that I've been a lot, but one or two times, say you're guilty, you fess up, they cut the fine in half, just like that. So worrying about a seven hundred and twenty-dollar fine, I think, is, is the wrong way to look at it. It's just a tool to try and get compliance. Um, as far as somebody that has a one car in the backyard being worked on, that they've been working on for a long time, it's a project car, I, I understand that. But what, what we're trying to get at for here is the ten cars that somebody says are all the project cars. You can go to the house in back of the high school on, I don't want to say High Street, but I'm not sure, there's a couple houses in back of the high school on that street there, but there's, there's a, there's an old boat. Mr. Reimer's boat may have moved from there up to where he lives, because there's a boat there that's probably been there twenty years and probably hasn't moved, probably has flat tires. And this is just a tool for us to try and prompt those folks to clean them up. try and prompt those folks to clean them up and, and try and keep this community the way it is.
Thank you. Thank you for saying the rights and responsibilities, that's absolutely true. Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, and I don't have it written in here, council, is there something in particular? And I just say that we.
On page eight dash ten, you can read that ordinance number.
Just the top there?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending, so ordinance number fourteen ninety, amending chapter eight point oh four of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to nuisances and reaffirming all remaining provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor McMahon and seconded by Councilor Mercerow. Any further discussion?
Yes. Uh, I think one of the, one of the good positive byproducts of this process, which has been drawn out much longer, I think, than a lot of citizens wanted it to be, because of changes on the council and a variety of other things, uh, but I'm hearing a lot more, uh, positive concern about helping neighbors who have issues that result in some of these violations, and I think that's a good thing, and I'm glad that there are neighborhood organizations forming to do that. We also had some cities who, uh, citizens who came to the Planning Commission a couple months ago and talked about, uh, trying to look into forming, uh, some neighborhood, uh, associations that could, uh, address a number of things, but this could be another one. Uh, and, uh, so I, I think that citizens working together positively to, to make this a better place is good. Uh, I hope that, um, as, uh, Mrs. Riley said, I hope that the conversation on social media will, uh, you know, begin to address issues rather than personalities, there's a lot more of, uh, that, the latter going on unfortunately than there should be. Um, I'm glad that we brought these issues before the Planning Commission, it seemed to some to have stretched out the process, but one of the other positive things was that our, uh, our city planner, who is a county employee, uh, has helped us in drafting letters that can be used to notify people of violations, and I think that'll be a helpful part of the process. Uh, so, we've made maybe more progress than we would have had we just tried to quickly enact some law changes. Uh, I'm, I'm appreciative of the dialogue that's taken place and, uh, the need to emphasize, uh, a balance of, of rights of, of homeowners and property owners with the responsibilities that they have to one another and to the community. Uh, so, I'm in favor of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passed. All right.
So, second reading and a subsequent reading.
Yep, because we have one.
Correct.
Right, so make sure that's, that goes on the fourteenth. Okay, so August fourteenth.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, next is number nine, public hearing for ordinance one four nine one, amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, chapter ten point oh four pertaining to traffic regulations. Staff.
So, Your Honor, same history and background, you have the staff report before you, um, I hate to admit, I just copied and pasted the language and changed the number, and Counselor Reisner, I'm sorry for confusing the traffic on and off-street parkings, 'cause this leads over to, to this one. And, uh, again, you've had this before you, and you're, you're aware, and we've answered questions, myself and, uh, Sean Boyle, so.
Okay, do we have anyone that wants to speak on this issue? All of them were at the same time, okay, perfect. Any questions for staff?
I want to just.
Oh, you did, so all the same? Okay. Okay, Bill Osborne?
So, do we need to open the public hearing?
It's, yeah.
It's already open.
Well, I have less to disagree with on this one luckily, so I won't talk quite as much, uh, Bill Osborne. One of the things I think that's missing here also is the abandoned vehicle definition, which is something Mr. Doofman and Judge Beluff and myself at a meeting, uh, noted that Gladstone doesn't have, so it falls to the state definition of an abandoned vehicle is a vehicle which appears to be abandoned, which doesn't say very much. So, that's one thing I think that should be added, um, you won't hear me talking about adding things too much to codes, but that's it. Uh, I'm glad to see that they're finally given the authority to Mr. Boyle to write tickets, because that was very questionable. Again, that was one of the first problems with the codes that I found. The issue where they're changing the, um, parking on the street to, I believe it's fourteen days if you don't have adequate off-street parking, the one concern I have about that is if you go on vacation, say you head off to the Caribbean for a week and you happen to live down in the flats where you don't have parking like we do on the hill. Uh, you leave your car out on the street, 'cause you grab an Uber or a bus, or a friend takes you to the airport, you're gone for seven, ten days, and come back and your car's been tagged and towed. So, I, I would hope that we put, if, if we're gonna change that, we put something in to, um, to deal with that, because some people are just gonna be gone, and unfortunately, sometimes their cars sit over the seventy-two hours, and that's where I hope discussion will fall into, but I don't know how we would know unless somebody's notified, uh, police. Maybe a provision where if somebody's going to be over that period, they can notify and have an exemption, uh, again, if they fit in that category where they don't have adequate off-street parking, so, that's really the only thing I have with this one.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Tammy?
I have none.
All right, additional questions for staff? And I did have that experience a couple years ago, and I just let the police know that I was gonna be parked there for three weeks, and there was no problem.
And I was just making some notes, that's an excellent point, you know, we have a house watch program if they're going to be gone, and we could just add a line on there if you have vehicles that necessitate being parked on the street in your absence.
Perfect. All right, any further questions? All right, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So, moved?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Milch, seconded by Counselor Neese to close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
I think these are needed, being that we're talking, uh, public street, we've got, as, uh, Ms. Riley, uh, mentioned earlier, and it's, it's not just on Clarendon, it's, it's all over where we have vehicles that are parked, uh, for, uh, extended length of time that aren't licensed, uh, or even if they are, you know.
Okay.
And then also with the boats, trailers, that, that's a hazard.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any discussion?
Uh, my only comment is just, uh, number-wise, you, uh, on the copy we have, we have ten point oh four point two point oh five, followed by ten point oh four point two hundreds, I just hope that we, just for my sheer numbers, they're numerically fixed when it is finished.
Oh, we need to get.
Yeah, the codification will take care of that.
Okay.
That's a good, good catch.
All right, any further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I would move, uh, the adoption of ordinance number one four nine one, an ordinance amending chapter ten point zero four of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to traffic regulations and reaffirming all remaining provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
I second.
Motion was made by Counselor Milch, seconded by Counselor Mercerow. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance one four nine one has passed. Thank you.
So, that was unanimous.
Right, so would you do the second reading for?
You can do the second, for sure.
Yes.
Uh, ordinance number one four nine one, an ordinance amending chapter, excuse me, is that right?
It should be ten oh four.
I, I think I got the wrong order, I'm sorry, this has just been, it's ten.
This is why the attorney gets to read it.
Did I? Page nine point two, nine dash two. I was right. But it should be ten. To be ten, that's why I'm confused, okay.
Make sure it's right.
Okay, we'll start again. Ordinance number fourteen ninety-one, an ordinance amending chapter ten point oh four of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to traffic regulations and reaffirming all remaining provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
All right, thank you. Tammy, could you please call roll?
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercerow?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Stimple?
Yes.
Ordinance has passed. Ordinance one four nine one has passed. All right, next is, so this is a public hearing for ordinance one four eight seven, correct?
I didn't think it was a hearing, but I'm assuming it is.
Yes.
Amending chapter two point one six of the Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, pertaining to court and jury trials. Staff. Oh, actually, wait a minute, Jackie needs to get on the road.
I'll, I'll stick it out, so.
Just a couple more minutes, then we can get you going. All right, staff.
Okay, so, I'd like to introduce you to our city prosecutor, Kendry Lundquist, for those of you that have not met her, and she's gonna present to you the proposed changes.
Hi, council members and mayor, thank you for having me. I know you have in your packet some of the documentations, but I'd like to take just probably about a minute and a half to give you, in my words, what the changes are. I don't know where the, what is currently in the municipal code came from as far as the jury's judgment, I know it's been there quite a while, and basically in the Oregon Constitution, the Oregon Constitution says that every person accused of a crime is deserving of a fair and impartial jury trial. The case law coming down from the Oregon Supreme Court, the Telecourt, has determined that part of that impartial jury is the defendant and his attorney having a right to confront and discuss questions about bias, et cetera, with those jurors, and our current process doesn't allow for that, because basically the current process, and some of you may have been involved in it, the court staff select names, and the jurors come to the court just for the actual trial. They're only selected by the attorney, the defense attorney and myself, not even with the judge or anyone, we just take names out of a box and review their questionnaire, choose who we want, and then they only show up for the actual trial itself. The rest of Oregon, including municipal courts, and of course, the circuit court across the way, you have to come in and be part of the selection process on the day of trial, if that makes sense. So, the change we're doing is just to bring it up with the rest of the state and in line with the Oregon Constitution, and I'm happy to answer questions about that.
Any questions? Do we have any public testimony?
I have none.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing, then?
Move that we close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor McMahon to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing has now been closed. Any discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I move that, um, the city code be amended to allow for voir dire, process to proceed specifically as line, outlined in the Oregon revised statutes.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion?
And this is for the adoption of ordinance number fourteen eighty-seven, just to be clear for the record.
Yeah, I'm gonna throw that in.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance one four eight seven passed. Um, second reading, please.
Okay, I'll get this one right. Ordinance number fourteen eighty-seven and ordinance amending chapter two point one six of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to court and jury trials and reaffirming all remaining provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
Any questions? Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Passed. Ordinance one four eight seven, mending chapter two point one six of the GMC pertaining to court and jury trials. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome aboard.
All right, so, Jackie, is this an okay, okay time for you to scoot out of here?
Um, I, you know, I'll just, I'll hang, I'll be fine, but thank you. I may not go tonight, so, I'm fine. I should've flipped the agenda, but we're, we're good, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
But at any time, if you think it's prudent to leave, that's, that's fine. Next item is number eleven, intergovernmental agreement. For those that sit here at these meetings, this is what we refer to as an IGA, with Clackamas County for temporary library director services. Staff.
And, uh, David and I are very happy to present this to you, because this just falls in place nicely with our whole new library that we are gonna be constructing, and I think all of you realize with the departure of our interim library director and having Oak Lodge Library Director oversee temporary library director services for Gladstone is just, um, a great opportunity. And so, uh, county council drafted the IGA, David has reviewed it, and I just want to highlight a few things. For those that don't know Mitzi Olson, she's been the acting director of Clackamas County's Oak Lodge for the past three years with ten years of work experience, and she has impeccable credentials and a master of library information and science degree, and I think that she's gonna fit in nicely with our transition plan. The idea is for her to oversee the responsibilities for twenty hours a week, and, uh, we already have money in our budget, because we will not be paying for a library director, and this next fiscal year, David and I will be working with the county to bring to, um, the city council what our next phase is into transferring over all of our employees to become county employees, so, this is the first step. You can see the cost impact, that we will pay the county quarterly, and we are very excited, um, for this partnership with the county. The Board of County Commissioners are going to consider the same IGA tomorrow.
All right, do we have any questions for staff?
But, um, no question, but I would like to comment, being the, uh, library liaison, I, I've talked with, with her and met with her several times, you know, over the last few months, and, uh, very capable person. Uh, I think this is, uh, a really great step, that we're able to take, being that, you know, down the road, in the next, uh, well, in two years or so, you know, we're gonna be, uh, really working closely with the county, uh, with the new library, and, and those services are gonna be, uh, meshed together. And so, this is, I think, a great opportunity to start that process, um, and, uh, she's very capable, um, and has already been, you know, working with our staff over the last, uh, couple of years, just as we've been working through this. Uh, the, uh, October, um, town hall meeting from a couple of years ago, you know, was mentioned earlier, and, uh, out of the ninety-something, uh, questions that were, were asked, Public Works kinda took the lead, but second behind that, which was about ten percent of the questions, were about the library, uh, you know, which was a hot topic at the time. So, uh, us being able to, like I say, uh, kinda ease into this with the, with the county, I think is a great opportunity, so.
Great. Any questions?
One other comment, I, um, just glancing at this, what caught my eye was her background in, in, uh, financial management-related things and concluding human resources, and I thought, oh, is she, you know, a business major or something, and I looked up and saw she had a library degree, so, I think we're getting a very multi-talented person, uh, at a time when it's about more than just running a library, it's about building a new library. So, she brings, uh, special skills that are especially suited to the circumstances we find ourselves in right now, and that's, uh, very pleasing to me to see that.
And she wanted to be here tonight, she had a family commitment, so, um, but yes, she's, she's very excited as well.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Please, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter, into an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County to provide temporary, uh, library director services for the City of Gladstone Library.
I second it.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful, thank you. Um, last item is twelve, League of Oregon Cities, also referred to as LOC, two thousand nineteen legislative priorities.
Uh, correct, and, uh, the reason I put this in your packet isn't necessarily for you to get into a, a drawn-out debate unless you want to, but, uh, you know, Gladstone for the past couple of years hasn't really provided input to the League of Oregon Cities on where we feel their legislative lobbying should be, and so, we vetted these with the department head staff, and if you look through the ones that we chose, you can probably head staff, and if you look through the ones that we chose, you can probably guess who picked what in those categories. And really, it's just an opportunity for, if the City Council wanted to choose four of those, that we would submit our survey to the League of Oregon Cities, or if you wanted to circle the ones you choose and we compile that, we can do that as well.
Could we do that? I think that would be the quickest way to do it.
Yep, and so, if you could get that back to us in the next week, that would be very helpful, and then I would let you know what the results came out at.
Okay. I think that sounds perfect. Is that okay with you guys?
Yep, sure.
Perfect? All right. So, then the next item is business carried forward, and we have listed I-205 widening project update from Ms. Betts.
And again, I tried to provide you detailed information, so if the public went online to see this, and you had me attend the C4 retreat.
Thank you very much.
And it was very, it's very timely because Gladstone will be greatly affected by the future of what happens there. But as you can see from all of the reports and studies and public input, is that tolling is being considered heavily, but there is no money allocated from the federal or state right now to do the construction with this project. What I wanted to let you know is that there is a meeting on July 15th where this Metro Area Value Pricing Advisory Committee is making a recommendation to OTC on the congestion pricing or the tolling, and that if we want to participate, that we could submit a letter. The C4 group decided that they were going to draft a letter first, and then I would send it to the City Council to see if that was something Gladstone wanted to endorse at this point. I did publicly say at the retreat that I did not believe that my City Council had enough information at this point, or that there was a strong desire for them to support tolling on that bridge, and I hope that that was within my purview. So, at this point, Gladstone has not endorsed in any way support of tolling. However, I know Commissioner Savis would like us to do that, and so, what I hope is that we could look at the letter that's being drafted first before Gladstone endorses either way on where they're going. I can say that I still feel that it's going to be a very long process, several years before this comes to fruition, but we really need to be part of the conversation because if tolling does happen there, I can tell you, all of our streets are going to be the diversion plan.
Yep.
And we're not prepared for that.
No. I know there's a letter going around, but it hasn't been finalized yet.
Right.
And I'm sure you'll be in that loop too, so as soon as it's finalized.
Correct.
Nobody can come to an agreement on the final language.
That's a good question. So, Jackie, in these conversations, is anybody talking about neighborhood impact modeling or anything like that?
No, and I think that how Commissioner Savis is trying to massage that is that in order to further endorse any kind of tolling or congestion pricing, that they need to include that, what the impacts are going to be to the neighborhoods on how to mitigate that.
Right.
So, he is very aware of that, but there has, none of that has been done yet. And, you know, listening to the state's presentation, really going forward, if there's no money allocated for construction, tolling is the best option to even keep the design phase going, and so, that's what they're trying to do, is to get more funding to keep that phase alive there.
Design it, the hundred and two million dollars.
I think everyone agrees that we need to have the bridge replaced and another lane added to each side. It's just the tolling concept is very raw and it's scary to a lot of cities that were at C4.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's huge, and it disproportionately affects Clackamas County because we don't have the grid, the street grid, like Portland has. We have very few options. It'll be a disaster.
I thought the tolling had more to do with Interstate Five and Interstate 205 versus...
Oh.
So, the money from the tolling is going to be used potentially for the bridge?
They're going to do tolling on two different sections. I believe it's the I-5 and the Rose Quarter section.
Correct.
And then the Abernathy and the Stafford section. So, what you're hearing is correct.
Well, I thought it was further out, like to Wilsonville on I-5 and...
Not that far yet.
No. Don't even bring it up. Don't suggest it.
In my understanding, the money isn't designated for, like, 205 or I-5. It could be used anywhere.
Correct.
Little pot.
Right.
And they're kind of looking at a three dollar and fifty cent fee.
Yep. To go over the bridge.
My only comment would be that that's probably, you'll hate me to, you'll hate to hear this, but that's probably the best place to put it because you cannot go anywhere else. If you want to get across the river, you're going to take the 205 and pay the three dollars. I don't buy, I don't buy quite as much that it's going to have as huge a congestion as Rose Quarter would, where you can get off in twenty different places and get onto side streets to get where you want to go, but, so that's just my take on that a little bit.
Well, that's why they're, I'll pick it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And Westland would be severely impacted too.
Oh, yeah.
Because you have to get on and off there.
Right there on Highway 23 will get hit hard.
But I just think it's important that we're staying involved with the group, and so, we're getting the information, but there's some really great animated videos on their website that you can see. They've already engineered and designed what it would look like. It's great. It's just, where's the money going to come from to do it?
Yeah, because I think they only got half of the transportation bill that they were asking for. They're asking for a billion.
It's a half a billion dollars to construct and complete the Abernathy, the Stafford section.
With a lot of projects. All right, so, anything else? Business carried forward? So, the next is business from the council. Counselor Mercero?
I have nothing.
Counselor McMahon?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Reisner?
As mentioned earlier, the Department, Police Department picnic was well-attended. Ms. Betts was there, throwing out hot dogs and other goodies, and so, it was very enjoyable. And, well, Bill's already left, I got to watch some of the pickleball. I'd only seen it on video.
Wish I could have been there. Wish I could have, wish I could have. All right, Counselor Milch?
I've mentioned before that I've attended the school board meetings here, and one of the things they do there is they, about the first hour of the meeting generally spent by giving recognition to students, staff, programs. The last meeting, we met the valedictorians and salutarians of the high school graduating class, some of the championship sports teams. We see art presentations, and I think, wow, their meetings are a lot more interesting than ours. They really build up the things that are going on, and I'm thinking, you know, we're transitioning to that kind of a meeting around here. In the last several months, we've seen and heard about people, citizens, who are leading efforts themselves to address a lot of things that are important in this community. We had people donate for a canine program for the police department. We had people start a group to rescue cats. We, tonight, we heard from a community-led group that's working on getting the food pantry operating again, and of course, we always have a great community involvement in our festival, what Bill Preble and his pickleball folks did to really revitalize a park that was in disrepair. All these things show, I think, a very positive involvement of the community in making this a better city, and it's great to be a part of a city where people get together and have those ideas and make them happen.
Thank you. Counselor Neese?
I have something I would like to share with all of you, and I'm going to ask Matt Tracy to, or Counselor Tracy, to take a copy and pass it down to everyone else. You know, I have been under scrutiny for quite some time about a business license, and an ethics complaint was filed against me, and I would like to share with the audience. Dear Lyndon Neese, this is to confirm that the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, at its meeting on June the 29th, 2018, considered the preliminary review report regarding the allegations Bill Osburn made against you. The commission did not find cause to proceed with an investigation, therefore, the matter is dismissed and no further action will be taken. A final order of dismissal will be entered into the commissioner's request, records. I appreciate all of those that have stood by me and supported me and given me the confidence to keep moving forward, and that's what I plan to do for the City of Gladstone, to continue to do the best that I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy?
Just to follow up on the North Clackamas County Water Commission, one of the things I wanted to update citizens about as they're going forward, we just met, board meeting was a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to go forward with some cybersecurity plans. They're actually working on making sure that the systems are all up to date, and they're going forward with these programs that'll help protect our water supply from outside hacking on the computer systems. And then, I know I keep saying this, it is finally coming back. We did hammer out the final language on our agreement on the water, on basically water purchase rights, and retained our rights and brought them back into the contract, so that's going for one final legal review. It'll be coming in front of the council.
August fourteenth.
Yes, and we're going to be able to talk about that and move it forward, so.
Fantastic group. One of the things I've learned is that the folks from our partners at Sunrise and our partners at Oak Lodge Water District are very concerned about making sure that Gladstone doesn't stand out as the minority in the group, and has given us power of coalition, so we've kind of tightened things up for dissolution. Their dissolution terms give us a lot more power at the seat, so I'm very happy to report that back to us. I'm glad we did this, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
I just will say that Counselor Tracy did make that language happen, and I've heard from other members of that group there, so thank you for that, and we'll talk more about it at August fourteenth, but that's a very big deal.
Thank you.
Yeah, I attended the Boardman Creek Complex Phase One groundbreaking ceremony, and Oak Lodge was there, and they said how awesome it is to work side by side with you, and that it's great having Gladstone at the table and having them there with an open mind.
Appreciate it.
And the ability to work with the group, so.
The water's kind of important.
It is kind of important. So, the Boardman Creek Complex Phase One is the restoration project of the, what's just upstream from our Glen Echo wetlands. It's from basically Hull to Jennings. They're restoring it completely. It's going to be an educational experience. They're going to have boardwalks, outreach, I mean, outlooks, interactive play area for kids. They're going to make the wetlands work like they're supposed to, which will hopefully mitigate some of our storm surges that we have downstream. Originally, it was going to be a very, very big project, and our little piece was going to be included, but we, as usual, never answered the phone and refused to open the door, and so they just didn't include us. Well, happily, they went ahead and designed our piece anyway, and now we're going to be at the table, and having our piece done to Glen Echo is something that's possible